Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Whitehall City Council Meeting of September 20th, 2022. Please all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Ock, would you please call roll?
Connaughton?
Present.
Kanter?
Present.
Peck?
Present.
Smith?
Present.
Bailey?
Present.
Dixon?
Present.
Elmore?
Present.
President Potter?
Present. At this time, I will accept a motion for the approval of the minutes of the September 6th, 2022 Agenda and regular meeting minutes.
President Potter, I'd like to make approval for the minutes of September 6th.
Second. There's been a motion by Ms. Connaughton, seconded by Mr. Kanter, to approve the minutes of September 6th, 2022. It's a discussion. Ms. Ock, please call roll.
Connaughton?
Yes.
Kanter?
Yes.
Peck?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Dixon?
Yes.
Elmore?
Yes. The minutes have been approved. At this time, we have a special presentation with Ryan Andrews of EMH&amp;T, as well as City Administrator Zach Woodruff regarding Resolution 28, 2022. If you'd please come forward.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of council. If it is all right, Ryan Andrews, the city's engineer and I. All right, good. We have a presentation that we want to make this evening regarding, I don't know if that's going to work any better, regarding the Fairway Boulevard Infrastructure and Safety Improvement Project. As you can see behind me, we obviously have notified people who lived along Fairway, so it is good that the United States Postal Service still works. If it's all right with council, what I'd like to do, we'll ask the clerk here in a minute to, we have a couple exhibits that we'll show, but if it's all right, I'd like to go ahead and actually make the presentation to the members of the audience, if that's all right with you.
Please proceed.
Thanks. So, my name is Zach Woodruff, the city administrator for the city. This is Ryan Andrews, our city engineer with EMH&amp;T, and we want to go through a proposed project plan that we have for Fairway Boulevard. But before we get started, can I presume everyone lives on Fairway or Fairway Circle?
Yes.
Excellent. And I guess the other, the next question I have is, as you all think about Fairway Boulevard, we've heard from a number of residents, but what are some of the concerns that you all have regarding Fairway?
Too many trucks.
Too many trucks?
Big trucks.
Big trucks?
Twenty or thirty a day.
Twenty or thirty a day? Okay.
Speeding traffic.
Speeding traffic?
Oh, yeah.
We need a comfortable, safe walking system.
Okay. Yes, ma'am, in the back?
We're team running a new, new, that must not come.
Okay.
That was pretty much, I live on the corner there, and that was pretty much what I was thinking.
That was going to be yours, too.
So, I also want to suggest maybe getting another one of those stop signs that lights up, because the one they replaced, the one with the heckle, doesn't light up.
That is, that is very good feedback. Anyone from this side of the room? Okay. Yes, sir.
The paving towards Main Street is getting kind of scruffy.
That, I don't know that I've heard paving described as scruffy, but I think I'm going to use that from now on, Mr. Sugar.
I'm on Fairway Circle, and that's always been.
That's also scruffy.
It's nasty.
It's also scruffy. So, again, I think I'm going to use that now to describe deteriorating pavement as scruffy. So, did you have?
We need a turn light at the main and Fairway, avoid east.
Okay.
There's no turn light there. You said for.
At the, you turn lane or turn light?
Turn, turn light or light both?
Okay, okay.
Turn left.
Perfect, okay.
Coming on the woods.
The new continental belt that speed a turn lane, turning from Hamilton into the.
Yes, yeah, on Hamilton going north.
Do you see more turning constantly?
Yes.
You know, it's a little turn.
Yeah, since it shows them, they're turning left.
Yes, turning left into the developing, yes. Oh, there's more?
I'm also concerned about foot traffic down the street. That, I mean, mostly, I mean, I don't want any increase in foot traffic.
You don't want increase in foot traffic?
No, we do not. We have crime issues, and it's probably the safest area in Whitehall right now, and we still have crime issues. And if anyone are going to bring down, move people down Fairway, it's just going to need more crime.
Okay. Did you get a comment back there, sir?
I was talking about the turn lane there. Also, a lot of people pass on Fairway.
Yeah. Kind of tied to the speed.
Yes.
So, so Julie, if you want to go ahead and pull up that exhibit? Maybe. So, what we are proposing is an eight million dollar public infrastructure improvement along Fairway that would be pretty multifaceted to address infrastructure, safety, speed, vehicular traffic, and whatnot. What we are, Julie, if you want to go scroll down a little bit, this would go from Hamilton all the way down to, all the way down to Main. We scrolled down a little bit, Julie. Maybe. Okay. So, I, no, I'm literally scrolling it on this screen. Yeah, I mean, Ryan, I'm on a whole different slide. So, it's not going to let me show it, because, you know, that would make it easier for the forty or so people that are here. So, what we are proposing is resurfacing the entire road from Hamilton to Main, adding streetlights similar to Yerling Road. And now it's gone. Technology's great when it works. So, we are also proposing a roundabout at Etna and Fairway to re, to slow the speed. I think all of us who have been over there, I think, when the, as an example, when the flashy stop signs first went up, they had more of an impact now that they've been up for a while. And so, and, you know, working with our city engineer, thank you, Julie, go, go to the next one. Yeah, there we are, right there. So, at Etna and Fairway, we're proposing a roundabout, and that will slow down the traffic going through that area. And the last thing we're proposing for speed, next year, we are going to be installing a number of what are called traffic humps, so not bumps, but humps, and Ryan, stop me as the engineer if I get off track. You, the technical term, you would go up, you would kind of plateau at an elevation and then come back down, so it's not like a traffic bump or a speed hump where you just go right up and down. So, again, to reduce the speed of cars in that area. And then we are also proposing a shared use path from Hamilton to Main Street. And again, that is part of the city's initiative to connect our city and to connect people who want to use other modes of transportation, not just vehicles, so walking and biking.
What side of the road?
It is on the north slash east side. So, it's north sometimes and east sometimes. So, the Big Walnut Creek Country Club side. And in the preliminary design, we believe that that can all be accomplished inside the existing right-of-way. Obviously, once we get into final design and final engineering, we'll be able to determine if there are any right-of-way needs, but we don't anticipate there being any so right now, with the exception of property owners at the corner of Etna and Fairway, we may need some additional right-of-way in that corner to be able to make that roundabout work. So, we anticipate that this will slow the traffic, so real quick, back to the, the speed humps. We're going to put some in place next year and in 2024 and evaluate their effectiveness. And if they are as effective as we believe they will be, again, part of this is based on EMH&amp;T's experience in other communities, then we will install a number of them, three or four, along Fairway as well. Again, understanding that one of the primary concerns we've heard, and I know that council has heard this, too, is the speeding on Fairway. And so, I think between a combination of the speed humps and the traffic circle, we feel pretty confident that that will reduce speed and make that street safer for pedestrians and for motorists. We also know that by getting pedestrians and bikers off of the roadway or just off the berm, will also make it safer for people as they navigate along Fairway. So, this is, like I said, about an eight million dollar plan. We have put together a method to help pay for this. Just to give you a frame of reference, the city's annual capital improvement budget this year was the, one of the largest we've had at 1.3 million. And so, obviously, we don't have eight million dollars in any one year to help pay for this. And so, what we're going to do is apply for what's called MORPSI attributable funds to pay for a portion of this. That is a 80% grant, 20% local match. If we're successful, we will then apply for Ohio Public Works Commission funding to be able to bridge the additional amount we would need. Part of that would be split between a grant and a 26-year interest-free loan. And so, from an annual budgeting standpoint, what that leaves is a, a capital outlay of about 1.2, 1.3 million that we can budget over the next number of years to have that money set aside when this project would be constructed. We are applying this year for those attributable funds through the Mid-Ohio Regional Planning Commission, MORPSI. If we're successful, this construction phase would probably be in 2026, so it's not happening tomorrow, it's not happening next year. But this is a way that we have been able to put together a plan to address a lot of the concerns that I know a number of you have raised, not only here today, but over the past number of years. So, that is a lot of information. I, Julie, we go down one more slide? I don't know that there's, now, go back, go ahead and go back up, Julie. Let's go ahead and link there. That's all the slides I have, so if you guys want to come sit back down, I'm not showing anything else on the screen. So, that is a lot of information to have thrown at you all at once. The last thing that I would mention is that we understand that change is sometimes difficult, but to try to address all of the concerns we've had in a way that the city can ultimately afford to do, this is a plan that myself and our city engineer feel like accomplishes a lot of those objectives. So, again, that's a lot of information to me throw out, so I will open it up. Let me go here first, and then Leo, I'll come to you. Yes, ma'am?
You mentioned that you're going to repave the entire Fairway Boulevard.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you going to consider repaving Fairway Circle along with it?
So, I misspoke, we're also, we're also going to repaint Fairway Circle.
Thank you. Completely under a fee.
Yes.
Thank you.
And for nothing else than the bridging of the basketball. So, yes, that is our ultimate goal, is to, yes, that, and I misspoke, that is absolutely the plan.
Thank you.
To repay both Fairway and Fairway Circle. We were able to repay a portion from Hamilton, you know, almost down to the Country Club entrance, using what's called permissive tax money. It's the five-dollar fee that's added to your driver license renewal that goes into a county pot of money, but that amount of money a year is about 190,000. So, clearly not enough to do the whole thing, but that's how we paid that. But yes, we are going to repay Fairway Circle as well. Ms. Ock?
I hate to break this up.
Oh, good.
But we don't have to. Are you going to put a stop sign in at Country Club? I, I know the original plan was one and a half, one at Country Club. Are you still doing that or not?
A stop sign?
Yeah. About three-way stop.
So, as of right now, I don't know that we have that.
Good.
On our, okay, well, then, you're one. I'm two for two!
Yeah, really.
Yes, sir.
Have curbs.
So, this plan does not involve adding curbs. And so, Fairway originally was designed to have the drainage swale off of the road, and that's how, frankly, it's how the infrastructure, the storm sewer, that's how that's all is there. For us to add curb and gutter to that street, you can easily add another four to five million dollars. So, unfortunately, that's just not in the cards. I think the plan, and Julie, will you go up again, or go down one? Yeah, right there, it's fine. What you can see is that the, the idea is that it would be, you know, road, a, a strip of land, and that's typically going to be where that drainage swale is today, and then, and then the, the shared use path. So, unfortunately, I, I can't put curb and gutter because the infrastructure, the, the storm sewer infrastructure needed for that would be out, would be pretty really expensive, especially the increases we've seen in, in those kind of issues, those kind of items.
Keep people out of your yard, because we have several people living in our yard. It's not missing any heat, but when somebody has a yard sale, people are pulling your yard, tearing up your yard.
Why? So, unfortunately, I mean, the one thing that this plan doesn't do is address the yard sale crowd, so, I mean, I, I wish I could do more, but I, I just can't. Yes, sir.
Can you elaborate on the shared pedestrian path? How do, how do you anticipate that?
Sure. So, we anticipate that being a 12-foot wide, 10-foot wide paved asphalt path. So, we are currently constructing shared use paths in other areas of the community, and, you know, as you see on example, as you see on Etna Road. So, the portion of Etna between Hamilton and Country Club today has a paved shared use path. Yes, ma'am?
Since I live where Fairway and Etna converge.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm concerned about the rest of the town.
Yes, ma'am.
So, is this going to be one of the, like, the hand around the bounds that have fields of people? You know, you got to come in and go around, and, or is this just going to be a roundabout, a two-way roundabout, basically a small circle, and you just go around and off?
It, it, I mean, this is, this is.
It's a real roundabout. Yeah, it's a real roundabout, but the roundabouts vary in size.
I want to know if it's going to be small, because I don't want it in my yard.
It would be a smaller roundabout. It would be a one-way roundabout.
Yes.
It's not going to be designed for, you know, semi-traffic drivers and things like that. It's going to be a smaller circle.
Well, that's, you're talking about the ones in.
Hamilton Road, maybe, and they're very good.
Yeah, this is small, this is smaller than that. So, this, this is smaller than those.
And not, so that it's not going to be in my yard?
I don't, so, I'm not, I'm not going to sit here. I, I know, but here's my problem. I can't sit here today and tell you where exactly it's going to be, because we haven't gone into engineering, and I think there's also, one of the things that I know you might know more about this than maybe some others in the room, the idea behind where, where the city's right-of-way is.
Right.
So, I can't sit here and tell you exactly today where it's going to be, but as, because I, I know where you live, you are going to be one of the people who's going to be most involved in this, because I, I will tell you candidly, we are going to need some additional right-of-way. So, I do know that that is going to be an issue, but we will certainly, we have, we have potentially three years to work on that. I, I don't, I don't doubt that even a little bit. I feel like my microphone just keeps going off. There was a que, yes, sir.
I'm concerned that a roundabout, I thought they were designed to move traffic and stop crashes on Etna and Hamilton Road. You add the crashes, I haven't seen one, I've lived in there 30 years, and the stop sign tells. If there's a Lamborghini, in terms of Main Street, he's 100 mile an hour by the time you do five miles. The only thing stopping is that, you can't stop.
Well, the. The roundabout is going to slow it down, too. I mean, I, I can tell you, if you own a Lamborghini, you're not going to want to jump the curb the speed. Oh, I mean, I, I understand your point, and, and I wish, I mean, let me say this, I, I wish, I think you all would appreciate, I wish there was a, a project or a plan that could stop every single car on Fairway from speeding. It doesn't exist, right? So, I mean, part of, we understand that. So, do I, again, using our engineer, who has a wealth of experience in this, we, we believe that this will have a better impact on slowing cars down along with potential these speed humps, because, again, you use that Lamborghini guy, he, he's not going fast over that more and more. So, that is.
Cars that's below, now he's on a new, now he's having a time of his own.
Well. So, at least we cost him money. So, I mean, that is, yes, sir, in the back.
You did say the shared path, everyone makes it like the north, mostly north side.
Well, I said, I mean, Fairway kind of twists, so some parts is north and some parts is, my point is, it'll be on the big walnut, this is just not one. The Big Walnut Creek slash Country Club side.
Zach, excuse me, if we could keep the side conversations down as a courtesy to everyone else or anybody here.
I'm going to, if you don't mind, I'm going to move the questions. I'm going to start on this side and go over this one, so don't think I'm ignoring you for any particular reason today. In the back?
Yes, we live on the one and three side, and we've got a huge 100-year-old oak tree. Is that, that's just 10, 12 feet? What are you going to do? Ask to take the trees down or?
So, those are, those are situations when we get into, so, let me start by saying, Fairway is one of the most beautiful streets in Whitehall, and so, it is absolutely the goal intent to not disturb things like your 100-year-old oak. So, as an example, that might be a case of where we say, hey, there's a big tree here where the shared use path would normally go. Can we work with you, property owner, to get an easement to put the shared use path that goes around it so we can save the tree? Those are the kind of things that we will work with property owners as we get into more final design, so we can come up with that, because ultimately, we not only through this project intend to plant more trees, but we want to keep what's already exist, because we know your 100-year-old oak, the tree I plant there today is going to take 100 years. I, I don't want to, I don't want to forsake the beauty of the mature trees that are there for a three-inch paddle tree. Again, Mark would, Mark would kill me if I let them have to work. So, we absolutely will work with people to come up with those alternative solutions so that we don't sacrifice what we all love about Fairway just for that path. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am?
I have two things. One of them is I'm definitely against bumps on that road because emergency squad. This is an older community, in my opinion, and I know how they, they hate that. I talk to many squad guys, they hate it because they can't get there on time. So, I'm definitely against that, but then I want to know who's going to pay for this? Just, just Whitehall? I mean, just Fairway Boulevard or all of Whitehall?
So, there's, um, there's no mechanism. Let me start with the first one. We've also spoken to safety forces, and I think, just like anything else, the idea of having to do it a different way than we've always done it, I think, is the reason they don't like speed humps. I'm in charge of the service department. My service guys don't like the idea of having to do this, but this will not have, when we talk to the safety forces, this will not have a impact on safety and particularly medics or fire trucks or whatnot being able to respond in a case of emergency. That's number one. Number two.
Then in a squad and go with those bumps?
Yes, ma'am. They, they have the abilities to do it. They're not Lamborghinis, they, they sit up hopping around, they'll still be able to get there as fast as they need to. The, the question about spending, it, it absolutely, so, as I started with, it's about an eight million dollar project. We're going to be applying for about five, five and a half million of that in grants. Then, we will take out, again, the Ohio Public Works Commission has a process called the Ohio Public Works Commission Grants and Loans. We will then bridge the rest of that with a loan, a 26-year interest-free loan, and then these capital budget dollars.
The 20% you talked about, who pays that? All of Whitehall?
Yes, ma'am, that is, that is what we pay for by the city through our capital improvement projects budget, which is a budget that everyone pays into. So, there will not be an additional assessment, fees, whatnot, on Fairway Boulevard. That's, we, we're not going to.
So, everybody in Whitehall will pay the same amount of whatever they're talking about, the same.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In the same way that this year, thank you, you helped pay for Mound Street, you have repaid it. So, as a city, we had this year 1.3 million in capital improvements that were done throughout the city. None of them this year were on Fairway, they were on other streets. So, in 2026, we will spend money to review Fairway, not spend that money on Mound or Beaver or Etna or Etna.
So, this won't be up for a vote or anything about the humps, whatever you're going to do, this is just how it's going to be? Or is it going to be up for a vote?
No, ma'am.
I mean, I'm just wondering.
There's no community vote on speed humps or.
I mean, the infrastructure, my neighbor said, just see if it's going to be up for a vote, whatever they're talking about.
Yes, so, the answer is no, it will not be up for a community vote, no. In the back, Mr.?
Seems like there's a lot more traffic at the intersection of Country Club and Fairway Boulevard than there is at Etna and Fairway. It would seem like that if you're going to put a speed hump, that would be the place for a circle, that would be the place to put it. The stop sign at Etna and Fairway is working much better than I would have thought it would be. Now, I live just a few houses from there, and I would really like to see the stop sign stay there, and if you're going to put a circle, put it up at Country Club. That's a lot more dangerous.
Yes, sir. In the back?
Yes. Couple questions. One, what is the cause of getting these grants?
I mean, so, they're, they're very competitive. Mr. Ock, I've sat on council for a number of years. We propose projects that we know are not only worthy or that are needed, but also potentially score very well. And so, in this particular, the first grant, we're applying for the, the bike path and the streetlights, because that is going to score better than, than that particular category. So, I feel confident, I can never guarantee anything. On the second portion, the Ohio Public Works Commission, if we get the first, I feel really good about the second one, because then we can show match, we can show leverage, there's all a bunch of different categories that we can score really high. So, as we're working with EMH&amp;T, we're writing, we're writing proposals to the scoring measures.
Okay. And when would be the type of things that you would know if it's done?
Sure. So, we're applying for the MORPSI attributable funds, is actually due at the end of this month. So, we're making that application. We should know end of February, first quarter of next year.
Okay. And then, if something were to change in the city, would you take that money, leave it somewhere else instead?
No. So, like, most, if not all, state, federal grants, once you apply, that's like the four-letter alert that you're pressing.
It's the same one.
Oh, it's the same one? So, once you apply and you're awarded, that's what you're locked in for in your money.
Okay. Question number two. In the next two years, what will be done? Just with speed humps only or with payment as well?
So, and, so, unfortunately, because of how the funding will work, we won't be able to do much more than patching hot holes and doing some spot pavement until, so the way, I, I don't need to get too technical, but when you apply for these funds through MORPSI, they'll, they will award them in February of '23 and tell you, you get. get your money in twenty twenty-six.
Correct.
So, you can't do any work before then because then you can't get reimbursed.
Okay.
So, all, so then, what we will do, if we're successful then, in twenty twenty-five, we will apply for the Ohio Public Works Commission because you apply in twenty-five, you should start spending the money in twenty-six.
Correct.
So, we will tie the funding circles up together and do all of the project at one time.
Okay. So, as you mentioned earlier, they were gonna put some speed humps.
In other areas, so, we plan to put them on a couple other streets in Whitehall that aren't scheduled for this type of a major infrastructure project-
I see.
-to test their effectiveness.
Okay.
So, I mean, we're gonna do, um, some traffic analysis ahead of time, install them, and then do an analysis afterwards to make sure that they are actually accomplishing the goals, uh, that we're looking for.
So, everything we're discussing, nothing will happen in twenty twenty-six?
That is correct. So, if you're, yes, you have plenty of time to think about it, if you're bored, I promise you.
Okay. Next question. Um, you were talking about the, the area the city didn't use.
The right of way.
The right of way.
Yes, sir.
Uh, once the area is used, the, the city right of way moves further in then?
No, sir.
Okay.
So, the only way that the city's right of way would expand is if we purchase it from.
Okay.
So, the right of way that's there today is the right of way. If I need additional, like at the corner, very small. It, just a little, you won't even notice. If, if we needed that, we will have to do a survey, we will have to make a good paid offer, and we will have to negotiate that. So, the only way right of way can get bigger, the only way, you know, the gentleman who had the, the question about the hundred-year-old tree, the only way that we can go around into his property would be if we came up with an easement or extension of right of way. So, that's the only way the right of way gets wider. It isn't just because we use all of it, how many years we have to buy.
Okay.
We're on this side of the room, yes, ma'am. Sorry, your call.
I'm at ten ninety-nine, and I'm next to the big old English tree that's been empty.
Okay.
I finally back in it. Well, I have four major accidents in my right of way.
Yes, ma'am.
We're talking squad, we're talking helicopter.
You're right there, Mary, right there.
Police dogs and-
No, I'm not near that.
Oh.
I, south, south of the big English tree.
Okay.
On the west side of the street.
Okay.
Um, I've asked the fans to have something put, so people can-
Armored.
For that curb.
Mm-hmm.
And they said, well, you haven't had that much. Well, the helicopter in my yard to go to the grant, the ambulances twice.
Police dogs.
Police dogs all over our yard catching people that have stolen cigarettes from CBS. And we're cutting that down, down Parkview on the fairway. And, um, unfortunately for them, there was a police one on one side, and they caught them. But they ran into a telephone pole next to our house and lost.
And that's where they're stopped.
Right, so, I mean, my, my, my answer to that would be, that's why we, we, we heard, even though you and I have never spoken, we've heard your concern.
It's challenging for you.
I'm sorry about that. So, I'm not that early.
Check for police, yeah.
Well, there's that. So, I mean, my point is, we, yes, we understand that speeding is a concern, not just in your block, but at Fairway Circle and before you get to the country club, we understand that it is a major concern. This is a plan that we believe will alleviate. I can't, I can't eliminate everybody's speed, right?
Once they turn off Main Street and have-
I agree. And so, so what I will tell you, I, I agree, that is an area where we will look for, if the speed humps are successful, that's the area we would look. That's also part of the reason, um, that we like Etna potentially a little bit more is if, if it's down at Country Club, we feel like that's just a bigger straightaway, and that's why we thought Etna. So, again, we'll get into final design when we get there, but I agree with you that speeding is a problem and we would, if it's on fairway, that this is what we think we can do about. Yes, sir?
Okay.
No, no, you, I have a question.
You've already, you're right there.
Yes, sir.
What's the, what's the white boy, the white boy?
So, I don't know it off the top of my head, that's, that's not a number that I've unfortunately been able to retain in memory, um, but I can certainly get that for us. And that's why, I, why? Well, I like why? Um, the, the five minutes, uh, I mean, Mr. Schrader, if I told you fifty and it was fifty-two, then you'd yell at me that I was wrong about fifty. So, I, I hate to give you a number, but our goal is to work inside the right of way.
So, the pathways can be ten to twelve feet wide?
Mm-hmm.
And if, if there's this free space, is it a pathway? How, how good would it be?
So, part of that is gonna be dictated back to the right of way. So, as an example, if there is seventeen feet from edge of pavement to end of right of way, and we put in, let's say that we determined that it's gonna be twelve people, then my guess is it'll be five. If it's fourteen feet from edge of pavement to your right of way, and we still do it well, then we're gonna have a shorter tree lawn. So, I mean, I think the width of what's called a tree lawn between the, the path and the edge of curb is gonna, is gonna fluctuate back and forth as we get pinched. I mean, that, you all know, and there's not one, it's not a subdivision that got platted or all the same. So, there's gonna be a lot of working to ensure that to the best of our ability, we stay inside the right of way, still create that, and, and there are times where the path itself may get pinched. So, I mean, these are all the things that we'll work through as we work to maintain a separation from the road, create, you know, maintain the drainage, have a safe shared use path, and stay in right of way.
Where, where is the path that connects, that each, each in the fairway, let's get it.
Let me scroll down. And, and I know you're, you're in the wrong seat for this, but it'll, it'll terminate at Main Street, right? And then it'll terminate up, you know, coming along the old squad dealership, Frank Rees Designs, to Hamilton. We have plans to connect then that path along Hamilton to Law, and we are already, uh, in phase one of the three-phase project that will bring a shared use path up and down Broad Street. So, and connect it to Whitehall Community Park, and connect it to the, the Delphin and the Y. Ultimately, our path will connect north. Uh, the City of Columbus is applying for a similar project to connect, uh, their, their shared use path north to Gahanah and hook into Gahanah's route down to Fifth Avenue, and then further south. So, the ultimate goal of the region is you could get on your bike on fairway and drive, and ride up to New Albany, or go down to Pickerton Ponds and the Reef Ritz. That's the goal. So, creating this, obviously, is an important target.
So, from the Main Street side, where, where's in that possible to go? Can that be where it's first?
Sure, so, to go to Main Street, Columbus's park actually then picks up, uh, their path to Vicki. So, Columbus has a shared use path that will go along Vicki and go down south into Clough. So, that's their route to go further south. Yes, ma'am.
Whenever you anticipate you're gonna be doing some work in things that might disrupt traffic or whatever access, do you have any idea on how you're moving to let residents know?
So, so far, I think the, the United States Postal Service has made a best plan. Um, here's what I can promise you, if we're successful and this project is coming along, there will be another one of these meetings when we get further along in design, and then there'll be another one when we bid out and a selected contractor before the work begins. Because that's the only way we can actually get you the answers that we have, uh, the information, whether you like it or not, you'll have the information, um, instead of the rumor mill on this is what's happening. Um, we anticipate this whole project to be done in one construction season, so, I mean, it'll start, you know, probably April, May, and would be done, uh, you know, before Christmas. So, it would be done in one season instead of airing over like a whole week. Let me go back here, because you asked a couple of questions. Yes, ma'am.
So, do you feel like there could be a concern for crime for the people on fairway when allowing all this pedestrian traffic to start coming down our streets and encouraging it?
No.
Because, I, I-
I, I think, I, I think that, um, bike paths and shared use paths, um, do, have, there is no, there's no data, there's no real numbers, no real information that shows that putting those in then has an increase in crime. Um, the more people who walk in front of your house or that use their bike in front of your house actually will make the property safer. Because criminals don't want to do criminal activity where they can be seen, they just don't. And I've yet to see any information that says, when a bike path went in, crime increased. And there are lots of bike paths.
Oh, here's my life. So, you know, I love Fairway Boulevard. I've walked all over the place with my dog, I've been a runner my whole life.
Yes, ma'am.
There's not a lot of foot traffic around where we live, no.
There's not?
There's just not. Um, I've walked in the parks, the new park, I took my dog down there, the new park that we built, and it's absolutely beautiful. I'm there by myself ninety percent of the time. Um, I don't foresee a lot of people like myself using the streets the way that I do because there's nothing connected to it. Main Street is very unsafe. I don't know if there's any people in here that take a walk and walk down Main Street.
Well-
So, I just am concerned and confused about the foot traffic that you think's gonna do with these paths.
Well-
It sounds like a great idea, and I've found a lot of them in the city.
Yes, ma'am.
I just think Whitehall's a little different than other parts of Columbus.
Yeah, I wanted to ask that too. Why are you doing this? I mean, what's the point of having a bike path down our street? Why? Why can see, I can see the, trying to reduce the speeding, maybe a circle. Why, why? Why are you spending this money? We don't have any traffic coming down our street right now, which is what we're doing. We don't have a lot of it, which is why.
Gets the bike-
It doesn't, it doesn't-
I just-
Right now, we know that it doesn't encourage people to walk on it or ride a bike on it. We walk the dogs all the time.
Well, I, I think, I think we get asked, you know?
I have a child that lives in this area, somebody's a ride specialist.
I, I think the goal, I think the goal is to have a community that is more connected. Your point is very well taken, that if this was the only path we ever did in Whitehall, it'd be a bridge to nowhere. That's not what we're doing. We're, we are connecting Whitehall to other parts of Central Ohio. That doesn't make it less safe. We are, if we are connecting Whitehall residents who live in other parts of town to be able to ride their bike around, over on fairway, that, I, I think there's a benefit to that for the community. I think there's a benefit to the community, to people who live on fairway or around fairway that when you say, well, no one walks on fairway now, okay, um, that's because there's nowhere to walk.
That's right.
So, but that's not, may I ask you that? That's not, but that's not good. That, that's not, that's not-
I walk a lot of Whitehall, and I walk my dog in part, I walk back, and you have a neighborhood.
Yes.
There's very few people out walking around.
I, I agree. Well, that's because I don't think we have the infrastructure, but I, I think we can agree to disagree, I think we're gonna have to agree to disagree on what the benefit is. Yes, ma'am.
You don't think that as people are walking there and riding their bike there, they're not gonna be cacing the joint, or looking to lose things, walking, and come back for later?
He's gonna have to go out.
No, I, 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 no. I, again, I talked to lots of my colleagues in lots of other communities who have extensive multi-use trails, extensive, and that, that just, it, it is.
Other, other communities don't have the demographics that Whitehall has, and the crime that Whitehall has. Whitehall's one of the most dangerous cities in the country.
But it's not, but that's not-
Well, if I was here-
Yeah, sure.
But, and, and I looked at this before I came here, you know, our crimes are not really, right? But, but, and so, Fairway Boulevard has turned it to the back, it's a toll.
Okay.
And it's kind of these, um, so it has, it's a state street.
Okay.
So, now you're all gonna lose your mind, other people, to go down our streets from that place.
I, I don't, I don't believe those two are connected, but again, I, Mr. Schrader.
Do you consider it like a bike path? A lot of the newer units around the city, they have a bike path right next to the road, it's art bike path, instead of putting a ten-foot section of street in somebody's front yard. That seems more practical to me. Is that something you would consider?
It is something we consider. There's a couple, there's a couple things there. One, the drainage system. Two, um, if, if you, if you were to talk to people in this field that really are experts in shared use paths and safety, they would tell you, separate it. In fact, ODOT, uh, when you're doing an ODOT project, they will not let you put the bike path next to the street. There has to be, I think it's a five-foot lumber. So, I understand what you're saying.
Thinking of four. Me too, is that if we are successful in the funding, the project's gonna be administered by ODOT, so we're gonna have to follow their rules. So, to Zach's point, that's not happening here.
But, again, that, that is not, having the, the bike path as a pavement marked portion of the road is not best practice. Well, I, I'm happy to talk to you because I know you're gonna have a lot of questions, but I want to make sure there's no other questions, I've no counsel as a member of Mr. Schrader, I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting.
If, if ninety to ninety percent of the residents on Perry Boulevard are against this, do you reconsider?
So, the city is committed to improving safety and improving the transportation options around the city. I, the city will use its right of way, I think we absolutely intend to connect Whitehall to other parts of the community. So, I mean, this isn't, there, there's not a straw pole that occurs. Um, and so, ultimately, this is a plan that we feel like we can get funding for. If we don't do all of the components, I don't believe we, I know we will not be successful, and then we're back to, the city doesn't have the resources to do all of it.
Will you do the next question?
Uh, my, so my goal is to move forward with this project.
Regardless of what's on the street.
Ultimately, this is gonna improve the city and improve all of the property values on fairway, I know people disagree on that as well. Uh, but again, the, the point of this is to hear what concerns you have and incorporate them into design, incorporate them like the gentleman with the mature tree, but we're gonna focus on how do we improve the streets to alleviate a lot of these concerns. And the concerns we've had are speeding, how do we can, again, we've heard from lots of people who want to have Whitehall connected to other parts of the Central Ohio region, we've talked to other people who want to be able to walk down and ride down fairway, we've talked to those people. So, out of a hundred letters that we sent, there are thirty-one, thirty-two of you here today. So, we appreciate the feedback that we've heard, uh, but we're gonna continue to move forward with this plan to improve the safety.
I, so, I assume in front of condos, there'll be no path there because that's Columbus, right?
Oh, no, they're absolutely not.
Okay.
Yeah, because the right of way there is still long, or still Whitehall, I'm sorry. Yeah, no, we, absolutely, I mean, that is, that would be really weird if they got it, right? Um, that, yeah, that would be really ridiculous. Yes, sir?
I applaud the speed dams, but I think that's pretty sad.
Speed dams? I don't know, is that true? Speed dams and scrubbing pink?
That would be clutching, telling you to call it through.
What's the deal?
I, uh, I don't see where the circles are gonna have the effect on the speed. You've got two miles approximately between fairway and the tap. They'll speed. They swing around a little bit, circle everything, you go another two and a half, a few miles down to Main Street, there's still cars.
Well, I think what we've heard maybe from you, sir, is that I, there's no magic Well, I think what we've heard maybe from you, sir, is that there's no magic rule. It is a culmination of a lot of these different things, it's the traffic circle, it's potentially the speed dams, yes?
Your thing was, I don't, you said the speed dam, the speed bump, or the speed circle was going to control the speed.
There, there is, Ryan can speak more to this, but I can tell you, they're, they absolutely slow traffic now.
From the speeds, from the traffic circle, it makes no sense that it's going to speed down further.
The traffic circle?
When they'll go around the traffic circle, they'll slow down, go over the traffic circle.
Yes.
There must be a red light coming.
Right, that's what people do with the stop signs. The traffic circle, time goes down for a longer period of time, there's a stop sign.
So, now, come back to you.
If, if, what I can tell you is that, again, if the, the, the speed dams, because I'm
going to use that now, if the speed dams are successful, I can envision a scenario where you have the traffic circle here at the bottom right, that there would be two speed dams between there and, you know, the entrance to Fairway Circle, right? Again, if it is, you know, maybe it's one, again, I'm not an engineer, but the goal is, the traffic circle is not the only thing slowing people down, it's a combination of all these things, and we think the combination of them will ultimately reduce speed on that street on the average. Again, I can't stop a Lamborghini guy from driving down the street, but I can make it much more difficult or expensive for him to drive down.
If the funding that you're looking for does not go through, is there, do you still do a speed dam? Is that a possibility?
Potentially, yes.
Okay, basically, you're going to have to, and I think that would be the biggest producer of speed out of this whole plant, that creates speed dams, especially in the long straightaway, I live in the longest straightaway there is, and if you put two speed dams on that straightaway, and then two at the other end of the fairway, you cut off the speed.
Well, again, we, we believe based on some engineering and other best practices, that it's a combination, but that is, if we are unsuccessful, certainly we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. I mean, certainly we're going to have to go back to the drawing board just to repave it. I mean, just to repave it, if you're talking multiple buildings. I mean, so, if we are unsuccessful, we'll have to come back to the drawing board, because we understand, even the safety side, just the structural nature of the pavement, we have to do something. Yes, sir?
Have they already surveyed some of this?
No, we've not done survey.
I, I live on the big lawn side, and there was a guy come by a couple weeks ago, and he put down a bunch of blue flags in my yard, said, there's some utilities over here. I said, what are you doing? He's white, I was just told to come out here and do that.
Was he a city guy?
No, no, he's a independent contractor, but he put them right down through, and I come to this, like, just, I have two view to streets.
Yeah.
And he come right down, went right away, and he put the flag right.
So, if it was blue?
There were blue flags.
Blue typically is your water service.
Well, they were there for two months while I kept running over the lawn, where it was.
Show them those flags, sir. So, that, that is.
Maybe anything goes across the street too, and something, trees are going to take out.
Yeah. So, I mean, that is, we will, again, as I talked about, we will have lots of other meetings to make sure, if we're successful in this funding, and as we get into design, we sit down, and again, property owners that would be most impacted, we're going to do that in one-on-one set, we're not going to do it, you know, certainly if there's a property owner with a right of way concern, we're certainly going to address that individually, but as we get into design, and then if we are fortunate enough to get into construction, we certainly will, again, we'll sit down with everyone, I'm going to need a bigger room, but I certainly can appreciate you guys wanting to keep informed as we potentially go through this process.
Mr. Woodruff, before you wrap up, you have another theory.
Yeah, no, I was going to come back here, I was just going to make sure we were done with questions.
Thank you.
Are there any additional questions from?
Okay. Can I ask you something, this is pertaining to this?
So, here's what I would ask, let me answer their questions on this project, and then, I would imagine, as they move on their agenda, most of you are going to leave, and I'd be happy to talk with you about whatever they don't want.
All right.
Perfect.
Yes.
Below.
Yes. I'm a resident on Fairway Boulevard, first I want to thank you for your presentation and proposal. A lot of the questions that I had have been addressed, however, I do have a question with regards to an average, if encroachment is needed on property, because as you go down Fairway Boulevard, it is a winding street, some houses sit very close to the street, some sit further back, and so if you're talking about a bike path, or whatever type of path, there's going to be some encroachment on some property. Is that correct, or no?
So, I want to be very clear in the terminology that we use.
Well, okay, maybe that is not the right terminology.
So, when you use the word encroachment, I think what you are really asking is, there are going to be some, there are going to be some houses where the shared use path is closer to their house than others.
That's right.
And I think anyone who's driven down Fairway knows the answer's going to be yes. There are some houses that sit hundreds of feet back, and there are some that sit fifty feet back. That is where we will work with those property owners to understand concerns, you know, property by property concerns, where the right of way is, what the drainage looks like, and all those things, to ensure that our impact to their, to their property outside of the right of way is either nonexistent or missed.
So, it's going to, so it's going to basically? So, if, so if the residents decide, hey, a lot of the ideas that you have regarding Fairway Boulevard are right on like the, like the safety, the installing the traffic humps, the lighting, resurfacing, if, if, if it is, we have real good, big concerns about a bad bike path, I live close to the street, and a bike path is going to allow somebody to look right into my window, what is the alternative, or is that then going to be something that's, we're not going to do, we're going to look around, going around about, we're going to work around about. Is it part and partial, can you do some, not the others?
So, I don't, the way that the funding is established, I don't believe that we will be successful unless all aspects of this plan are put in place. Because if we are unsuccessful, let's, as an example, we decide to scrap the shared use path, then we don't have the leverage amount to make the Ohio Public Works Commission grant attainable. And so, then now we're back to, well, now we have to do it all through capital improvement dollars, and we don't have the funds to do that.
Is there, is there an alternative?
To?
A shared path, or in some places, share it and take it a different direction, or?
So, I mean, that is what I would say is what we will work with individual property owners. So, as an example, if there is a, a, a portion of the path that is closer to someone's house, that is where we can do things like pinch the area between the road and the path, pinch the path itself, or, you know, we've also seen in other communities where then landscaping is installed to provide that additional screen. So, one of the things that you see, you know, on the exhibit here, is we intend to do, you know, some level of landscaping, trees, whatnot, but certainly in those areas as an example, maybe it's arbor by that separates the path from that person's house. I mean, there's a variety of ways that we'll work with that property owner, but there wouldn't be, there, there wouldn't be an opportunity, I think, to have the shared use path come down and stop, and that it just doesn't go in front of this person's house and picks up on the other end, we wouldn't get funding for that. Does that answer your question? Mr. Dixon?
Yes, on the resolution, it says that it authorizes the mayor to file an application. That sounds to me like it's apicking. Now, if I vote yea or nay on this, does that then end my yays and nays, or is there somewhere down the road where something will come up where I say yes or no to this?
So, there will be multiple times over the next, if we're successful, so this resolution just allows the city to apply for that. If we're successful, there will be multiple times that city council action would be required to complete the project. There would be funding and budgets, there would be potentially the acquisition of right of way, that requires city council action. There would be the application of further funding applications, like I mentioned, Ohio Public Works Commission, OPWC. So, this application just allows us to go see if we can get the first pot of money, to go see if we can get roughly three and a half million in, in federal funds to come back to Whitehall. And so, yes, there will be multiple opportunities for you, in your capacity, to weigh in on the project.
So, this is, this is simply saying yes to applying, but not necessarily yes to the project?
Correct. Correct, because this application, much like the Ohio Public Works Commission, requires a formal resolution from the governing bodies for the application.
Another question, if I may. I get some sense that, you know, as you have no doubt got, of, of the citizens being sort against the bike path. Is there any way in which they, you, us here on council can work together and, and separate certain things, like yea, they get the, the roundabout, they get the speed humps, they get this, that, but maybe not the bike path? Is there any way to separate this project?
I think that's the question that's always asked, was, is there a way to fund the, the other things and not the, the bike path?
Okay.
Is that your?
I'm sorry.
That's fine, but that was your question, I mean, just so, I mean, to reiterate, in case people didn't hear.
Okay.
I don't believe there is a, not to be punny, I don't believe there's a path forward to be able to fund the improvements without the addition of a shared use path.
So, it's a whole package, Jordan, not at all?
I, I don't know of any of, the city engineer and I have, have studied this for the last six, eight months, and I can't, we cannot come up with another way to fund the improvements that we've talked about, that there's, I would call unanimous consent law, without this.
Okay.
Because, again, for the Ohio, the Ohio Public Works Commission, if we were just to apply for the paving and the lights and the roundabout, would never score high. It wouldn't, we can look at the metrics, we can see how we would score, it wouldn't score high. And then, again, we're back to, how do we, how do we pay for, you know, two, well, no, I can tell you, three point two million plus, like, I mean, how can you pay for four million dollars if you just do those things?
Right.
There's just not a good fund, there, there are very few options for municipalities to apply for grant funding through the state or the federal authority, in this case, through MOPC, for federal transportation dollars. This year, part of the reason we feel more confident in this plan is because through the infrastructure bill, there are tens of millions of more dollars in what's called the bike pad category, to be able to make this a more realistic project. So, as we've evaluated it, part of it is the timing, because in subsequent, they only take applications for this every two years, so in two years, there's not going to be this influx of federal infrastructure dollars, there just won't be. And so, there's no good way to separate those things, and still be able to then get the repaving and the other safety.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to the folks from Fairway who are coming out, I appreciate them.
I have one question. After this project we go through, and ever created, who maintains?
The city.
The bike path?
The city.
Okay.
It's, it's, it would be different inherently from standard sidewalks that are in other subdivisions or other, this, this would be owned and maintained by the city, similar to the one that's on at the today.
So, the snows?
Well, we don't. Sometimes, that's not my department, but the, the city would work to clear them, but I can't promise that we're always going to be out there with the, the equipment to be able to do that.
Mr. Bailey, have a question.
Yeah, looking at that picture, I obviously see Columbus Country Club, I would assume that's Columbus property?
Yes, the, the Columbus Country Club is in the city of Columbus, yes. Otherwise, I would, otherwise I would call it the Whitehall Country Club all the time.
I'm just trying to feed you, so I could ask this question. Do you know what the line between Whitehall and Columbus is, as it is on that picture?
You mean, do I know where the corporation is?
Yes. How does it run through there?
It, it is literally the backyard of the property.
The backyard of the property, yeah. Okay, so it only clips off part of the condos that are new, right?
No, the condos that are new, those are all in the city of Columbus, except for the right of way. So, that was the city of Columbus, or that was.
Because that was country club land.
So, that was the Columbus Country Club, and it stayed in the city of Columbus, so it's technically Columbus, you know, addresses and property with right of, with city of Whitehall right of way.
Okay, good, you answered my question.
We'll have more questions down the line, but the gentleman in back, Mr. Fisher, that's you that's looking in the back, yeah, you can contact us, anybody out here can contact us, we'll listen to you, I'll tell you that right now, if you, we'll hear what you say, and this is a process that we go forward to, and then for good questions, ask what's yours, and I know you get around the city, because I do see you out there quite a bit walking, so. Were there any additional questions?
Satisfy his counsel.
Were there any additional last questions from? All right, well, yes, sir.
Do you have any pictures available of this proposal?
So, this will be available on our website on Thursday, again, it'll be on Thursday, so it will be on. So, again, I, I really do appreciate you all coming out, again, I know not all of the answers were the ones that you were looking for, but we want to be as honest and transparent with this project as we can be, so that ultimately it's as successful as we can. So, again, I really appreciate you all coming out. Mr. President, maybe a three-minute recess, just to kind of reset, a lot of people leaving.
That's fine, take three minutes.